I think we'll go ahead and start. Good evening, welcome to the Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, August 6th. I'm Hazel Nurse, Chairman of the Board. Jen is our Town Planning, Jenny is our Town Planner on the microphone left. Then we have John Pizoni, John Gelsuch, Mark Silverberg, and Peter.
Now you're leaving anyway.
You forgot your name, all right.
Just one of those. Sorry. Apologize. All right, I just want to remind you, this meeting's being recorded by Wesbro TV. And also, please speak directly into the microphone, because otherwise, I gather, the recordings are not coming through very clearly for the TV station. So we've asked everybody to make sure they speak into the microphone. The first thing here is on our agenda is 200 East Main. I don't think our applicant is here yet, but I think Jenny can go ahead and give us a summary of it.
Yes, thank you. So the applicant has requested an A&R, so an approval-not-required endorsement. And I will bring up the plan here, so you can see it on the screen. The ZBA has granted a special permit for modification to a pre-existing non-conforming lot here at 200 East Main Street. That was on May 6th, 2024. So essentially, the property owners at 200 East Main Street wish to convey a portion of their property in order to acquire a larger portion of land from 8 Haskell Street. So the proposal does meet the requirements of an A&R lot, and it needs your vote to endorse it.
Okay. Are there any questions from any board member on this particular matter?
I have a question.
Yep.
So the ZBA decision was when, March?
May 6th.
May 6th.
And it was recorded. So it essentially made the lot more conforming, they added law area.
Because the plan in our packet was June 28th. I'm just wondering if there's changes on there, or why the date changed? Or do we need, like, does the ZBA decision need to be updated to the correct plan number?
No, this is just the date of the actual A&R plan. It would have been different, a different title from the plan that was submitted to the ZBA.
Okay, because the ZBA decision references a plan date? And I'm just confused how that works, like, what if the plan changes?
Then they would need to go back to the ZBA. But this is the same plan, it's just an A&R plan, so it has to have a different
It has to have a different date.
Title block, it has to have a different.
That's fine, I just, I was confused by that.
So in other words, the plan has to have different notations on it after it's been passed by the ZBA, or approved by the ZBA, and that's the reason there was a change in dates?
Correct, yes, the plan is the same.
Right.
I was going to ask the same question on a later topic, so.
Okay, that's a good question.
Okay.
All right, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this matter? If not, are we ready to vote? If I could have a motion? Peter?
The Planning Board endorsed the A&R plan entitled "Approval Not Required Plan," a plan prepared by engineering design group, and dated June 28th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you.
Before we move on to the next one, is there something I need to do to get that TV working? Or just change the input?
Kristen, do you know how to get that working? Do you know how to get that TV working?
I'll mess around, I just don't want to miss something else.
There's something on the wall there, is my memory, I keep seeing people pushing.
Oh, here it comes. Oh, we got it, we got it. He's got a remote, I didn't even know that existed.
Oh, okay.
I think the next half of the conference room is going to be over here.
Okay.
We got it, Jen.
Well, he's going to probably hook up.
Oh.
This is the applicant for 9412 Peters Farm Way. And if you could introduce yourself and explain to us your application.
Absolutely, good evening, I'm Essex Petrie with Pulty Homes. I'm joined here by Brian Beck, also from my office, and Mike Rosati from Marshanda Associates. So this is relative to the Chauncey Lake project. And we have gotten some requests from our homeowners, at the clubhouse in particular, requesting some additional handicap parking spaces be added. So we're here tonight to present that to you, and, excuse me, ask for your approval. Currently, there are three spaces right up front of the clubhouse. And what we are proposing is, I'll leave this up for a second. On the left side is the existing, and on the right side is what we're proposing. We're proposing three additional handicap spaces. All three will match the existing nine-by-20 spacing. They're, where they're going is currently grass strip right now, so it's just taking over some of that space in front of the clubhouse. And it will be adding a sidewalk adjacent to it to accommodate the parking spaces for access to the clubhouse. So one last picture that might help as well. So just looking at the clubhouse, there's an existing hydrant there that will remain in place. We'll create a grass island around the hydrant. Two new spaces with a sidewalk accessing them on the left. That tree will get moved to the other side of those two spaces. And then there'll be one space put on the right, and where that stop sign is, or the sign that's there at the crosswalk will get bumped back, I think it's a ped crossing sign, on the other side of the space on that side. And that's, that's really all I've got.
Are there any questions from board member on this matter? John?
Does it impact any calculations for open space or anything like that? I know it's a teeny tiny space, but I don't know if you were marking on.
No, there's, there's significant amount of open space out there, and this is just such a small number.
No, no other questions.
Mark?
Yeah, I just saw in the permit pro, the comments from Lisa that were dated today. Lisa Lane's our town engineer, did you see those? And you're comfortable with those? Okay.
I believe the only comment.
Do we need to reference that in the motion? Or some type of exhibit in the motion?
No. The Planning Board is making a determination that this is a de minimis modification.
Okay.
And then, I do have one additional comment when the board is through with their comments.
That's the only question I had.
Peter, any comments? All right, Jenny, exhibit comment?
So Fred Delnardo, the Community Development Director, asked me to also request that the board take a look at the proposal for temporary signage. The applicant has proposed a construction entrance sign. And being that it's temporary, it, there's no real guidelines around it. It is located on town property, though, and since this was a special permit that went before the board, I think this can just be part of this de minimis request. He does show it on there, the select board also took a look at it, and they asked that the Planning Board take a look at it.
So this is the main entrance coming up from a river, I never remember the name of the street, the main street that comes up.
Solomon Fuller.
Solomon Fuller.
Yes, exactly, Hospital Drive, but yes, that would be a sign at the intersection of Solomon Fuller or Hospital Drive and Lyman. Just to direct our construction traffic through that route directly to, because the construction, the phases that we're working on now are kind of in that section of the overall development, so it removes them from going through the, by the clubhouse and up through all the, where the current residential units are occupied.
So it's going to go directly up from Lyman Street up Solomon Fuller Drive?
Correct. Yeah, and so it just, it's one sign at that intersection, directing our construction traffic up that access road. Which is currently, it's, it's open and available, this is just a sign notifying the trucks where, or the, you know, construction traffic where that to go.
How much longer, out of curiosity, do you think you're going to be constructing? In which, what number of building are you on at the moment?
We have five more buildings.
So, yes, so we have, we have about five more buildings left, so probably between four and five years, would be a rough estimate.
With that information, I guess my question is, how long is the temporary sign going to be up? Is it going to be for the four or five years?
Yes.
Do we have any restrictions on what defines a temporary sign?
I think Fred is here.
And then, the second question is, that's going to be a pretty popular area for like soccer on weekends and practices? Is there any consideration for the traffic that's going to take place during those games or those practices? Because there's going to be a lot of kids running around, a lot of trucks, or not, sorry, not trucks, a lot of cars and stuff, so if there's trucks coming, I'm just concerned about the safety of all that circulation.
It is currently an access that is available and used for construction. So there isn't necessarily a change in the, the usage of the road. It's just for informing the drivers, the construction drivers, where that entrance is. So the use doesn't change, it is currently being used for that construction access. It has been planned for that as part of the, the project, and it is intended to be that for the entirety of the project. This would just be a sign to inform the, the construction traffic where to go.
And I just wanted to make a quick comment, that typically, the Planning Board would add this into the approval of the subdivision, that this would be the location of the construction sign, and maybe specifications. You did it for a recent hearing on another residential development, adding a construction entrance. But this wasn't done in this instance, we reviewed the plans and could not find anything about it.
Fred Delnardo, Community Development Director, just as a point of reference, summary and decision, I don't remember the exact verbiage, but you do talk about the fields, time of construction, to try to avoid, I don't remember the exact verbiage, but there is something in your original decision that does talk about avoiding the fields during certain times for construction entrances, things like that.
All right, thank you, Fred.
Thank you, yeah, and to answer your question a little more directly too, Mike, who's our construction supervisor out there, was letting me know that the traffic, construction traffic, related traffic, is significantly diminished on Saturdays because of the activities.
Great, thank you.
John Pizoni, any questions?
No.
Mark?
Yeah, so I'm not necessarily opposed to the sign, and I, I do think it's a de minimis change. I guess my concern is with the process, because, you know, we, we have a duty to be transparent to the public, and it, literally, this is just coming up now, so anybody who saw this on the agenda, went to the meeting packets and information, saw that it was purely, you know, they would not have gotten any information about a new sign. They would have only gotten information about the handicap parking. So I, you know, I guess for what that's worth, I, you know, I'm not happy with that, but I'm probably going to vote for it anyway, because I, I think it's a de minimis change. So, those are my comments.
Peter? All right, how tall is this sign? I, I can't read it from here.
Six feet. Six feet.
Six feet.
Do you want to stand up?
We do, Pete. You're the only one six foot here.
I don't know, I guess I'm not really happy about having a large sign down there with construction entrance, but I understand from the Building Department and from Fred, that for, I'm assuming for safety sake and to route the traffic in the appropriate way, construction traffic in the appropriate way, it does need some sort of signage out there. So, you know, I'll be willing to approve it on that basis, but as I said, I just, since we're talking four or five years, it's not, I mean, most times when you have a construction entrance sign out, you might have it for six months, so the thought of four or five years out there, I'm just not as enthusiastic about it in any way. And I suppose, I would request that if there were any change in your construction schedule, that you decide, for example, not to complete the entire, the rest of the buildings, and you know there's going to be a year or two years where there's going to be a lag, that the sign be removed during that period. And then perhaps go back in, but I just, as I said, just thinking about it aesthetically and the way we generally do these, I'm not thrilled, but as I said, I will approve it, but as I said, take the, into consideration on that.
How far back is it set up from the road?
Do we have a typical? Five feet off the road, primarily, the, the consideration there is for snow during the winters. So that there's enough room to get that snow off the road in front of it.
It's not like an, an orange construction sign.
Why not?
It's actually a good looking sign. I think it's, it's not.
No, I understand that. I'm just thinking about the fact is that it's kind of, has become a park for the kids and for people to use. And so having a large, you know, construction sign sitting out there was my question. Fred, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, again, I hate to interrupt. Fred Delnardo, Community Development Director, I'll take the hit on the timing. Pulte's actually been asking us for over a month on this. Some of the question became, one, the Department of Public Works, the director is okay with the sign, so they didn't have any comments. The issue came up to who should okay the sign, whether it was planning board or the select board. So it was determined by me, because they're here tonight to bring up the topic, and I do apologize that the delay. It shouldn't have been brought up kind of as a guest, you know, like, but it worked out that they happened to be here tonight. I didn't want to keep delaying the request. So the, I, again, I apologize. It's my fault that it didn't get to you sooner.
Thank you very much.
Fred, can you say, Fred?
Fred?
Just a real quick question. Since it's a temporary sign, who has the authority to say, take it down? If like you determine that they're done with construction?
Building Department.
Yeah, the building department, you know, not going to say this happens, say Pulte goes away, they abandon the project or the rest of the project. Construction doesn't get finished, we don't have anyone to take the sign down. Is it you that says, okay, we can take the sign down now after three years? Do they have to come back before the planning board? Do they have to get any kind of approval to take the sign down?
Yeah, I mean, so you can condition your approval on that they take it down after a year or two if you want. I mean, or you can have them revisit it in a year or so. I mean, outside of, well, you never know how sales go. But I mean, they've kind of been going at a two per year rate. So I think four or five would be, I think that's really pessimistic on their side that they're going to be here four or five years from now. Hopefully they're not, but, so I, I don't have any major object on this because it, you can consider it a directional sign. And in fact, that's why the board can weigh in on it because it's part of the construction. So yeah, they should be responsible for taking it down. As I said, you can certainly ask them to come back in a year or so to see how it's going. See if there's still complaints or whatever, how it's functioning with the fields and things like that.
I'm just trying to avoid a situation where it's like six years down the road, no one's done anything with the sign. Construction's complete. Everyone's like, well, it's not my responsibility, it's not my responsibility. Who, who makes the determination, all right, sign needs to come down at this point?
Yeah, they're responsible, they would be ultimately responsible for them. And the power of the pen's kind of mighty because they'll be looking certificates of occupancy. So if they know they get to that point, they just won't get them. You know, so we, we do have that control on our side if it gets to a point where they abandon ship, which I highly doubt. But we do have a recourse should that be a problem.
Okay. Is there any thought about the board that we should put a time on this and ask them to come back to revisit this in a year, eighteen months? And we don't?
I think they've, and they've met their timelines and they've been very cooperative. I don't think we need to put a timeline on a small sign.
Yeah, I think Fred's got a handle on that.
Yeah, if you want to.
That's fine. No, that, I, the board seems to agree that we'll trust you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to comment on this application? If not, if we're ready to vote, could I have a motion?
I move that the planning board make the determination that the request of the applicant, Pulte Homes, for a de minimis modification to special permit SLO number twenty, two thousand eighteen dash one is minor in nature and does not require a full hearing. This determination is subject to the following conditions. Number one, the determination is limited to the documents submitted as part of the application. Number two, all terms and conditions of the original special permit decision, SLO two thousand eighteen dash one and all subsequent modification unless modified herein shall be brought forward in full force and effective with this modification. Three, applicant shall record this decision with the Worcester Registry of Deeds before the commencement of author, authorized site activity and shall submit proof of recording to the planning board. Failure to record this decision before the commencement of authorized site activity shall result in the rescission, rescission of this decision. Rescission of this decision. I'll never get past that.
Is there a second?
Second?
I have a question on the motion. So I know the motion said something about, I think it was condition one. Can you read that again, Pete?
The determination is limited to the documents submitted as part of the application.
Okay, so that includes the sign? Because I don't, I didn't see.
You can also add that includes the sign. When this was written, it was before.
Right. So do we need to add something to the motion about the sign, just to be?
Yeah, you can add to that first condition, including the temporary construction sign as presented at the planning board hearing.
Okay. Will you accept that friendly modification?
Yes.
Kristen, have you got that?
Okay. Thanks.
Are we ready to vote then on the amended motion? All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next matter on our agenda is an application by Albrecht Auto Group at eighty Turnpike Road. And they've asked for a continuance until, I believe, the August twentieth meeting.
Yes.
Is that correct? The item after that is the applicant for one oh one dash one oh five Flanders Road.
Do you, do you want to?
Oh, do we need to vote?
I move that the hearing, I move that the hearing for a site plan review for eighty Turnpike Road be continued to August twenty, twenty four, during date.
Are there any questions or comments from board members on this?
I'll second.
Do you have a question, Pete?
No, I'm ready to.
Okay.
Sorry.
Did we have a second?
I did say.
A second, all right. Any other questions? All in favor?
Well, I, I, I'm sorry, I have a question. I'm not going to be here on the twentieth though. So with Pete, with Pete Adson?
That's your first meeting though.
That's three.
It is. But don't you need four to vote? So are you trying to, are we going to try and close it on the twentieth there?
It's a site plan review, so you just need a majority.
That's fine.
And I think that's also going to choose the next one. On one oh one dash one oh five Flanders Road. Also has requested a continuance for continuation of public hearing for site plan review application to August twentieth.
The memo was written before they requested the continuance, which was today. So if, I mean, you can, you can do the motion.
I move that the here, public hearing for one oh one, one oh five Flanders Road be continued to the August twentieth meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? All right, so that also is going to be the same question you just answered.
Right, it's fine, it's a site plan, right. Just wanted to double check that.
Sure. And I think we'll just jump to one oh, one six five Flanders Road, which has also requested a continuance to August twentieth.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
All right. I move that the planning board continue the hearing for one sixty five Flanders, Flanders Road until September seventeenth, twenty twenty four hearing date.
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah. How long has this one been going?
Since September of twenty two. At this point, the reason for the holdup is because we were still waiting for peer review, the peer review letter and for it to be reviewed by the engineering department prior to it coming to the planning board.
Okay.
Because we had some discussion about having them withdraw this application, didn't we?
We did.
And then reapply because of the length of time.
Yes, and they did submit their updated documentation, which was sent to the peer reviewer. And so the holdup is on our end essentially right now.
Right, but I guess the problem is if one of these three don't show up, we don't have enough people to vote.
Right, you'll need at least three of the original members on that.
Well, they're requesting to September seventeenth, so we may have a replacement for Pete.
But they won't have been on the hearing, like, I can't vote on it because I wasn't here when the hearing opened.
John, were you not?
Oh, well, that's a great point because I might be away that week too. Let me check my calendar.
So they may have to withdraw recently.
Or we can continue it to a later date.
I mean, at this point, there's been such a delay in this application that delaying it another two or three weeks should not make any difference. And maybe we can finally get this taken care of.
If you give me a second, I'm not clear on what my dates are in September, so I just have to find.
We still have a month and a half to figure it out.
We could, yeah, I mean, we can.
Yeah, you can vote to continue to September seventeenth. And then if we find that three members aren't available, then I will let the applicant know and we will allow them to continue it further.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to continue it past September seventeenth without them okaying it.
Well, I, I'm going to be flying back from London that day, so I'm not sure I'm going to come to that meeting.
That's the seventeenth of September?
Yeah.
Why don't we go ahead though and continue at this point to that? Then we can wait and continue it further if we don't have the quorum that we need for that. If your plans change, for example.
Well, I guess, I guess that's feasible.
Yeah, the other option obviously is continuing it to, I guess it'll be the first meeting in October. That must be our next meeting.
Right. I would just hesitate because the applicant asked for the date specifically. But you could, we could ask them on, it's closer to September seventeenth, if they need to continue it because of the availability to continue it to the next date.
What happened to the earlier September meeting? I mean, we have one on the, prior to the seventeenth, don't we?
Well, we have a joint meeting on the third with the select board.
They were not available for that date, the engineer.
Oh, all right.
We have a meeting on the tenth?
No, they go to COMCOM.
Don't surprise me. Well, I mean, given that it's taken two years, can't we just schedule this for October first and?
I would be hesitant to want, to continue it to a date that they have not.
Approved.
Said is okay, yeah.
I think we ought to stick to the seventeenth at this point. And if we have to continue it, we can always do that.
All right, well, I can't guarantee I'm going to be here.
That's fine.
I may be asleep.
Okay. Then send us a message saying you're asleep.
All right, do we, we have a motion of second already on that?
Yes.
Are there any other questions or comments on this? Are we ready to vote? All in favor? All right, that's right. All right, sixty six Oda Street, applicant.
Good evening, everyone. Patrick McCarty, McCarty Engineering, here tonight.
All right, Patrick, can you talk into the microphone just to make sure?
Sure.
That we can hear you.
Thank you. How's that, better?
Yes, I don't think it's on.
The green light's on.
Oh, okay.
How's that? Still not better?
Try the other one.
Now? How's it?
Not really.
That seems awfully close.
Hazel, you'll have to read the legal notice for this.
Oh, sorry. I don't think I have it.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute, I've got it. All right. All right, I need to read the legal notice on this. Okay. Pursuant to the rules and regulations relative to site plan review under section three point one of the Town of Westboro zoning law, bylaw, the Westboro Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August sixth, twenty twenty four, at six thirty PM on application record number twenty four dash zero two two four oh, requesting a modification to the site plan approval number twenty twenty one dash five to expand the existing parking lot located at the rear of the building to include an additional twenty one spaces and construction of a twenty by thirty foot freestanding cooler. The location of the proposed project is sixty six Oda Street, parcel twenty five dash four dash zero, Westboro, Mass, located in the Business Highway BA zoning district. The applicant for the filing is owner William Oliveria on behalf of Cold Harbor Brewing. The public hearing will be held at, in the Great Hall of the Forums of Nisselville Building, forty five West Main Street, Westboro, Mass. Please see the calendar on the Town of Westboro homepage, posted forty eight hours prior to the public hearing for additional information. To access the application and any submitted documents, please go to our online permitting system, Permit Pro. HTTPS, westboro, patriotpermitpro.com and search the above referenced record number. Records are also available for review in the Westboro Planning Board Office at forty five West Main Street, Westboro, Mass, during regular business hours. Persons unable to attend may submit comments and writing to the Westboro Planning Board in advance of the public hearing. This was noticed in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette on July eighth and July fifteenth. Okay, Patrick.
Great, thank you very much. Again, Patrick McCarty, McCarty Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant, Will, who's seated behind me, Nineteenth Hall Realty and Cold Harbor Brewing. First of all, I want to congratulate Will. Two days ago was the one year anniversary of being open, which is great for him and his family and the success that they've had on Oda Street here in Westboro. It's exciting. But I'm sure as many of you have noticed, parking has continually been an issue with the site due to its popularity. Original site plan had seventy five parking spaces which conform with the zoning requirements for the town. However, we've all recognized the need to add some additional parking, which is why we're before the board this evening. We also had to file with Zoning Board of Appeals for a variance because we were at the, oop, the sixty percent, forty percent requirements for open space and impervious coverage. So under the original design, so in order to propose this parking lot, we had to seek and obtain a variance for reduction in open space, which we did receive. And that variance decision has been recorded in the Worcester Registry of Deeds. So that was kind of the first step in the process. Second and third steps concurrently were to submit to the planning board for amendment, to an approved site plan, and to conservation for an amendment for an existing order of conditions that hasn't been closed out yet. Jen Miller recognized that, hey, let's hold off on issuing the certificate of compliance because some of the work you're proposing is within the buffer zone. So let's keep everything open under the original permits to see how this all plays out. So we did already have an initial meeting with Conservation Commission. They had no issues with it. They were just waiting for the DPW review of the stormwater to come back, which has since come back. We've addressed Fung's comments with the revised plans that are before you on the screen this evening. So I believe everybody's familiar with the sites. So just a quick overview at the bottom of the page is Oda Street, the existing driveway in, parking along the front of the building, the brewery building, and then the parking ramps around the back. The barn that was on the property when Will purchased it was maintained, and that's this small rectangle here in the back corner. Currently, there's a flat grass area from the end of the existing pavement to the, where it drops down into the detention basin. There is like a hammerhead style turnaround so that the truck coming to the loading dock can nose up here and then back into the dock. So we're simply proposing to extend that, make a right hand turn, creating a total of twenty new nine by twenty parking spaces. We're also proposing to add two additional spaces here at the end of the existing runoff spaces. So we have a total of twenty two new spaces, but we are losing one of the existing. So we have a total of twenty-two new spaces, but we are losing one of the existing due to the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board regulations. When you go greater than seventy-five parking spaces, we had to add another accessible space. So you'll see right in front of the main entrance, we're crosshatching one space and converting one from a standard spot to an accessible spot. So the net gain is twenty-one spaces, taking us from seventy-five to ninety-six. We're also proposing as part of this, a freestanding twenty-by-thirty cooler. The intent of that is to minimize the number of trips per week that the food supply companies have to make to Will. So right now, he has a small cooler freezer inside the brewery, but if he constructs a larger one outside, he can cut down on his deliveries and consequently, number of truck trips to the site per week. So that would help relieve some of the traffic congestion, not having the delivery trucks in and out at the same time. So as I said, this has gone to D P W. It's been reviewed and approved by them. We have a copy of the comment response letter. We've received our variance. And we're hoping that the board will act to grant the amendment to the approved site plan. Fortunately, the detention basin was large enough, so we have to add one new drainage structure that's shown here. We have a new catch basin that discharges to the existing sediment for bay. We have to make the stone berm a little bit higher, otherwise all the drainage works. And I should have pointed out that we are also adding a wooden guardrail along the limit of parking slash top of detention basin berm so that no vehicle drives and ends up in the detention basin. We did leave a gap. I can zoom in here maybe? Nope, it's not gonna cooperate, but this clouded area represents a flat space between the edge of pavement and the guardrail where the snow can be stored. We're relocating one tree that's where the two parking spots are proposed, and we're also adding four additional trees as part of this project. I know that Jenny offered a draft letter. Yes, you did, draft decision here. With some general conditions. One is boilerplate recording it if the board so grants. Two is obviously all the original terms of the, I don't think it was special permit decision though, was it site plan approval?
Yes, it should be site plan approval.
Yeah. No special permit on this one. And then it's limited to what's shown on our plans. We want to update the revision date as well to the August one plan that's before you and submitted. Comment number four, I'll leave that discussion to the end. Comment five, a bike rack which we are proposing at the front, seeing that sometime in the future, the Be Walt Trail will be constructed along this. So in this bottom right corner, we're proposing a bike rack that would be next to the future Be Walt Trail. And then condition number six is another boilerplate relative to the site as built. Jenny, I don't know, if you want to first talk about comment four, if you want me to give my two cents and Will's two cents on?
Do we want to talk about any of the other conditions first?
I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I know originally a lot of customers would park on the grass.
Yes.
How many cars do you think were parked on the grass at any given time?
Twenty, twenty-five.
So this should relieve any of that issue?
Yes.
Okay.
One thing, Will, if you want to come to the mic, he should also point out that he's offered discounts through his social media, that if you take a ride share app to the brewery, that there's a discount, ten percent, I believe?
Twenty.
Oh, twenty.
So Will Olivera, owner of Cold Harbor Brewing Company, we did put up fencing around the front of my property and where my sign is to keep cars off of the grass.
Yeah.
They were driving on there, which isn't a problem until it melts, until it thaws, and then it's rainy and attracts all the silt on the roads.
Yeah.
So we did put up barriers to avoid that. We also instituted last fall a twenty percent off ride share. So if you come into the brewery and you've taken a ride share, you show your receipt, you get twenty percent off your food bill. So we have tried to encourage as many patrons as possible to carpool. I also have a verbal commitment from Target, the manager of Target. She allows our employees and myself to park in that adjacent lot that's on the side of Target where their loading dock is. Eighty to a hundred spaces that no one really ever uses, so my employees park there and walk over. Weather permitting, of course. If it's raining or snowing, employees will park in the lot and avoid the inclement weather.
Do you plan on building some type of path for your employees to?
I mean, there's a path now. It isn't an impervious path, but there is a path there now. As long as it's raining or snowing, people aren't using it anyway.
I don't think that's on their, his property, so I don't think he could.
Correct.
I mean, I think the pathway is probably on Target's property.
Well, most of the path is on my property, along my fence line.
Oh, okay.
And there's an old, very old fence in the back that I think is Target's from good fifty years ago. Most of it's down. But I have a path to an opening there.
Is there any way to expand more parking around the other side of the, like, towards the back, towards Target?
That's what we're asking for.
Well, I mean, in addition to what you're proposing today. I'm just looking at the aerial, and it looks like you have some trucks that have moved, cleared out some stuff towards the side, back end of Targets.
So that, I don't know the age of that aerial. That's probably our construction equipment back there when we were building the detention basin?
Probably, yeah.
So if you look at
Oh, no, it's an old chiller. It's my old, it's the chiller from my former site.
Oh, is that okay?
So we just disassembled it, put it there. I've been trying to sell it online. Nope, no good yet. If you're looking for a ten-by-eighteen cooler.
So, so beyond the parking that we have shown, it's essentially flat, and then it goes down into the detention basin, flat at the bottom of the basin, and then back up, and you're essentially at the Target fence at that point. So the only, the only way to expand parking beyond this, one would be a greater variance from zoning board that was already granted. And then you'd have to change the at-grade detention basin to below-grade chambers like we have in the front parking lot, which obviously would be a big undertaking between those two tasks. So we do feel that between the ride sharing, between the agreement with Target for their staff to use that parking lot, that I don't think any Target customer actually knows is there because you have to keep going around to the left. And then these additional twenty-one spaces, I think, will go a long way to alleviate the congestion that you've seen there. Yeah.
I think it's a great idea. Is there proper lighting back there?
So we do, we, there is a light pole in between, actually at the edge of the existing pavement, pavement now, kind of right here. And so this photometric shows adding a head on the backside of that. So right now, there's a head facing forwards. We're gonna add another head facing back that will light this rear parking area.
Is there no concern of light? So I go back to those baseball fields behind there, and the, you know, if you go behind Target, to where they're parking, is there proper lighting where they are walking through?
Yeah, there's, there are light poles back there.
Yeah.
But on his property.
So there'll be our light now, and then Target's lights.
So there's gonna be plenty of light in the parking lot itself?
Correct.
Won't be any problem there?
Right.
Being able
But they are shielded down, lights, so they're compliant.
Right, but I just want to make sure, particularly in bad weather.
Yep.
That's a, you know, that's a significant walk, actually, for some people, from that back, new back parking lot all the way to the building where the entrance is, because the entrance is on the other side. So I just want to make sure that there's good lighting for bad weather.
So you said you have a verbal agreement with Target to park back there. Have they just not been, sorry, probably not talking to the microphone. Have they just not been receptive to doing a shared parking agreement?
The manager there seemed to think that timing and red tape and processes would take quite a long time to reach corporate. And she gave me the verbal, and I accepted that.
Yeah, Will, could you come up and talk into the microphone? We are being recorded.
Yeah, not, I wasn't necessarily asking in replacement of the proposed parking lot, just for future parking needs, having something so that even customers can park over there and walk over. Has, have, are they just not?
I haven't raised that subject with her.
Because I mean, that just
It was only regarding my employees.
Yeah, it just seems like that would be a perfect overflow parking, if you can, if there could be some kind of agreement.
Customers tend to use it.
Yeah, so, I, back when Jim was the planner and we were initially going through the planning board process, there was the whole discussion, I don't know if you were, you, I don't think you were on the board then, right?
No.
So M D M, who's the town's traffic consultant, presented a whole bunch of options, one of which we weren't very fond of, but it called for the relocation of the Target driveway, and actually a connection out the back of Cold Harbor into that relocated Target driveway. And I know Jim tried at length to get ahold of anybody at Target, and no one would talk to him. So Target Corporate is more difficult than to deal with the local manager, obviously, and so that's who Will's interfaces have been with to date.
Just seems like such a waste of all that parking.
Well, it does, the other thing was the Amazon next door, which doesn't seem to be used particularly. So there's always been a question about that, but I do know you did try to have some discussion with them as to whether you could use some of their parking, and I gather that
That was a hard no.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
So I
Mark?
Sorry. So I don't really want to get into parking at Target unless we actually have a design for a path that engineering can look at. I mean, I feel uncomfortable with us encouraging that or discouraging that. I think that can be between the owner and Target. Now, if they can formalize that and come back for another, whether it be de minimis or however you want to look at it, I just, I'm a little uncomfortable with just saying, yeah, let's have people truck by the detention path and on an unpaved path.
I don't think anyone's saying that. I'm just, I was, this is the only time that they're gonna be before us if they get this approved unless they do something else. So there's really not gonna be a chance to encourage that type of use in the parking lot if that can be done in the future, to what you're saying, is if you can
Yes, I think maybe, well, encouragement to talk to our buddies about off-site parking is a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think if you So, so just to follow up on that, I'm glad you're a success. I hope you continue to have parking problems in one sense, right? Like, I don't want it to spill over, and I don't want people parking on the grass or backing onto Oda Street or any of that. So if you do need more parking than these twenty-one spaces, then I hope you can formalize some arrangement with Target. Arrange a safe conduit for pedestrians to get from that parking to your site. Possibly formalize more handicap spaces if necessary. I'm not even sure.
So I think potentially there's a warrant article, Jenny, possibly, that might change the impervious requirements for the site and others in the zoning district?
Yes, we haven't opened the first planning board hearing on it, so there's no
So potentially, you know, in the future, that might be another, if that comes to fruition and passes a town meeting, that might be another option in the future. But, you know, I think that based on the number of cars that have, worst case scenario, parked on the grass, I think the twenty-one spaces is gonna go a long way.
Well, I think there becomes a point where the restaurant can only hold so many people. I mean, in other words, you know, you do reach a maximum point where there are only so many people that by law can be accommodated in the restaurant, and therefore, you know, the number of parking spaces, and at least you've looked at the fact that you've had approximately twenty in, on the grass, where they shouldn't have been, that this seemed to be a logical number in looking at what you were doing as far as adding parking. And I don't know how else you measure that kind of thing at this particular time. Mark, I didn't mean to interrupt you, go ahead.
No, no, it's fine. So again, I'm glad you're a success, and I, you know, I can see the need for this parking, but I'm, you know, I I went through our documents, and I didn't see the Z B A decision, so I actually went and looked up the Z B A decision because it wasn't in Permit Pro. Unfortunately, Z B A hasn't had a televised meeting since two thousand twenty-one, but I did find their decision. And the decision basically authorizes this because of the shape of the lot. And I'm, I'm not sure, like, now that they have a variance, what is our duty as a board? Because the zoning says sixty percent minimum. And how do we get around that sixty percent minimum? Do we just say the variance is fine? I mean, for me, I don't see a real public benefit to this. I feel like this is a situation that was created by the owner. You know, if they had built a smaller building, then they would have had a bigger parking lot. So I, you know, I don't, I don't understand how the shape of the lot has anything to do with the open space reduction. It's a, it's kind of a stretch for me. I don't, you know, I think the decision was May sixth. How long is the appeal period and?
Twenty days.
Twenty days, so that's passed, so we know that
That has passed, and it was recorded at the registry.
So I looked at, you know, how can I justify this? And still protect the integrity of the zoning that the town has voted for. And my feeling is you got two, you know, you've got an industrial zone right next door with an overlay where if they were in that zone, and they're not, but they're right there, they would have, they would be able to go to forty percent if they built a LEED certified building, which is, okay, so that's not gonna happen because they've already built the building. And then we have a bylaw proposed where they, you know, again, that hasn't been voted on yet, but the proposal would say that they could earn some points, and one of those points would be a contribution towards public benefit, and there's a whole formula. Hopefully, we've all had a chance to review that, but the public benefit for the eight thousand two hundred and thirty-four square feet that you're asking for an impervious solution, I did the math, and if my math was correct, the math would be thirty-three thousand and change in order to, or there's other ways to get those points in the zoning. So I'm not suggesting that a cash donation, but I feel like, you know, we had something from sustainability in our package about, you know, whether it be, I mean, you can gain points with E V charging, you can gain points with recharging brown water for toilets. I mean, there's a whole list of points in this proposed zoning. But that hasn't passed yet, so I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know how the board feels about this. I mean, I think common sense tells me they need the parking. But as my, you know, protector of the electorate, I guess, I'm uncomfortable with it. Without some justification.
That goes, sorry, that goes to condition four, though, which we were gonna pull off on for right now.
Okay, well, that's, that's my feeling.
My feeling on the situation is, you know, Will started in Westboro, started from, you know, a smaller establishment, then moved to his new location. If you go to the new location, it's definitely a place people want to go to, and if you go there, it's actually not, you don't see Westboro people there. You're seeing people from other towns coming, spending money in Westboro. Clearly, there is a need for more parking. I think the board should, I don't think I'm gonna be, be able to vote on this issue, but I think the board really should push forward the parking because if he's progressed the business, we also have, when I came on, I think there was like two hundred empty spaces or locations in Westboro, and we were just trying to fill the spaces with businesses. And clearly, his business has brought, you know, the beneficial, you know, business to town, so I think we should really consider that in the whole scheme of all this. It's, it's, we're, you know, I get the zoning, but, you know, adding the parking is gonna make him more successful. We also don't want to push people away from wanting to start a business in Westboro and growing it and then keeping it in Westboro. I mean, he could have moved the business out of Westboro. He didn't. So I, that's just my feeling on the whole situation.
Before we get into all that, can I just ask another question? So the bike corral location, I don't love it right near the road. Is there any way you can, like, bump it a little bit closer to the building?
Um-
So like it's on the, between the building and the parking versus the road and the parking?
Yeah, I don't think we have a, a concern either way. My thought was, you know, that's gonna be the future bike trail, so if you pull off the bike trail, you hook your bike up and then you walk, you know, across the parking lot to the road.
Right now, no one rides a bike to Cold Harbor Brewing Company.
There's no place to ride a bike to Cold Harbor.
Correct, like you barely cross the street, down Route nine.
But the hope is, the hope is with the B wall going there, you could ride it. And then theoretically, the people who would be parking their bike there would be going to Cold Harbor. So you'd want, I would think you'd want it closer to the building so that they would have the ability to keep an eye on it while they're there or they don't have to, you know, park right next to the road.
Yeah, I don't think we have a concern either way.
I just didn't know if there was a reason it was located there versus somewhere else.
And it, if, thank you. So if, you know, the board so desires to move closer to the building, that's, we're not objectionable to that. As, as far as the whole zoning thing, I, I, I get it, right, it's kind of a, a difficult thing. So the zoning board's job was to say, okay, are we gonna give you the variance or not to go below the sixty, uh, percent? So they've done that, they've granted it, it's been recorded, so that's done. So now the planning board is, and I know this is hard, right, cause there's the zoning next door and there's the pending, uh, article that's gonna change it. But looking at it in tunnel vision for today, it's, the board's purview is, does this meet the site plan rep- approval requirements, you know? Are my parking spots the right size, is my driveway the right width, is the stormwater correct? So it's those kinda site planning features. Read, in conversations with Mr. Leonardo and reading Jenny's, um, draft decision and conversations with Will, um, the, the numbers that have been tossed around, um, are, are we, in our opinion, heavy. Um, although Will's been in business for nine years, nine years now? Essentially, he's a startup as a year ago, right? Cause as you just alluded to, he was in a small taproom on Milk Street, just brewing, you know, getting a pint, now to a full blown restaurant. So, a, a large number like that, you know, Will's not Amazon. He's not, you know, building a couple hundred thousand square foot buildings up and down Oda Street. He's essentially a startup who chose to stay here in Westboro, as you alluded to. All that being said, we are asking for a reduction in open space, which we were granted that variance. And we think, in our opinion, more appropriate might be a donation, a voluntary donation, because technically, I don't think the board with, under your current regulations can ask for one because it's not a condition of site plan approval typically to say you have to make this donation. So I think a voluntary donation from the applicant to the op- the town's open space fund where we've asked for a reduction in open space. So to offset that, I think that would be a more appropriate avenue to take. Seeing that the other regulations haven't been adopted and we're not in the industrial zone. So really, sticking with what's the current zoning, I think, we, we feel that's the appropriate avenue.
My understanding was there's a requirement in the site plan that you have to have sidewalks in front of your, did you have to have sidewalks in front of your site, is that correct?
I would have to look back at the requirements, but, um-
Yeah, there was a sidewalk requirement, I believe, that-
And then that, that requirement was removed because there was supposed to be a grant that the town was supposed to receive for Oda Street?
Yes, so we did, I say we, uh, Will did grant an easement across the whole front of the property and allowed for the future con- construction of the, actually widening of Oda Street. The curb line moves to within his existing property line. Then there's the grass strip and then there's the proposed B wall trail. So during the original site plan approval process, we agreed to that and we actually took two parking spaces off this front right corner, which is why there's the funny jog, and moved those two spaces over here at the request of Mr. Robbins, so that we had that clear space along the frontage. And then, uh, the, the other thing that, as far as going green, the building, when we ordered it, we factored in ten pounds per square foot of collateral load in the roof loading of the building so that it, the building itself can support solar. It takes, depending on how you anchor it, two to three pounds per square foot. So Will's currently in discussions with a couple different solar providers about outfitting the building with solar.
That's great to hear, very happy to hear that. Um, totally encourage that. I guess my question was, if there's a requirement for site plan approval to put sidewalks in the front and then that wasn't done because there was a grant, right? And now there's no grant or their grant is not gonna be sufficient, then I would think the donation or the requirement could be put into the site plan amendment because of that requirement in the site plan standards.
How is that possible?
How is what possible?
How can you, how can you say that when Amazon down the whole road doesn't have any sidewalks?
I'm not saying construct a sid- hold on, I'm not saying construct a sidewalk. I'm saying if there's a requirement to put sidewalks in for site plan approval, is there, like, I wanna, if that's, if I'm wrong on that, then I will take back-
I've rented an easement to the town, twelve feet of my property-
Right, to put a sidewalk from-
That's not what I'm, but that's not what I'm asking. That's not what I'm, I'm, hold on, that's not what I'm asking.
Yes.
I'm asking if there's a requirement for the, the person developing the land to build a sidewalk on their frontage.
In your bylaw or in our decision?
In the bylaw.
No, it's something that's routinely asked for, but I don't believe that there's a specific site plan approval standard in your regulations that require sidewalks constructed along your frontage.
And I don't think it was in our decision.
I'm not asking about the decision, I'm asking about the standards.
Yeah, right. Right.
So if I'm, if I'm mistaken.
Well, I, yeah, I just don't understand, like, um, if you're willing to make a donation, does it matter to you where it goes?
Hold on, can we, can we, can we just focus on, I'm trying to get this question answered. I think Jenny's looking for it right now.
I, I'm looking in the, the regulations. So for sidewalks, it does ask for the location of the sidewalk areas. Um, the planning board in the past has made it a practice for applications, um, to ask for a sidewalk in front of the property or a contribution to the construction of a sidewalk. Um, you have done it in many instances, including Amazon Next Door, who did, um, provide a generous, um, monetary contribution towards the project on Oda Street. So there have been other instances where the planning board historically has done that and where this would directly benefit, um, this property because it runs right along their frontage. I don't see that there's any issue with asking, um, an applicant to contribute something.
So there's no requirement?
Correct.
Right. But you guys are offering a donation of something?
Correct, yes.
We haven't figured out what that is yet.
Right.
Is there any interest in directing that donation to a sidewalk fund to get that sidewalk constructed at some point in time? Does it, I guess I'm asking, does it, does it matter where it goes for you?
That was the town's proposal.
Do you have any particular-
No, I, I don't, I don't think where it goes is the big of an issue, is that the dollar amount is-
So what would the dollar amount be that you would be willing to donate?
Twenty-five hundred dollars to the open space fund.
Can I, can I just say something? Is that, I think when the Amazon projects were approved, we had asked for that money then. I think now it seems like we're going back and asking for it where we should've asked for it when you first approached us for this project, not the expanded parking, but to, to develop this land. So I, I just, I don't feel comfortable asking for anything. If they wanna donate something to the sidewalk fund, then it's at whatever they wanna donate to.
That's fine, I guess my understanding of the whole situation, again, I wasn't here for the original approval, so I don't have firsthand knowledge. My understanding was that the planner at the time mistakenly or thought at that point in time there was enough funding to do the sidewalk and then basically directed all the applicants saying, we don't need your money anymore because we got a grant. And that was mistaken and we didn't actually have that funding. And so if we had known that information, I think that would've been a request. But I don't think we can say, because we didn't ask then, it's not something that should've been, should not have been done. I'm not saying we should do that.
Oh, no, I just said we could've, I, I think the time to, to ask would've been then and just now it's, it's passed.
Right, and it should have, however, we were operating under, I guess, mistaken information of thinking the town got this grant that we don't have. And therefore, the requirements or the request that we would've put in was not, uh, given because of that understanding.
And I think it'd be difficult, quite frankly, to go back. My feeling is that it did go, yes, it should've been part of the original conditions. Probably worded as such that if the grant, you know, if there was not a grant, then X would've happened. And so we got caught in the situation that the funding which we thought we were going to get, we have not gotten to cover what's going, would be that particular construction. And then to, uh, go back then and ask, my concern is to go back then and ask for a financial contribution for what would be essentially the cost of one, really comes down to being the fact that it was not included in the original decision. So I think we're at a, I think we're kind of caught in the twister between in this particular situation. Um, and hopefully there would be a figure that could be contributed more towards something like open space since the reason that we're, he's asking for a reduction in the open space. So it makes sense that since he's asking for a reduction in the open space because he's putting more parking in, then that logically, one follows the other.
That, I think that's fine, as we, we can decide where it goes, but I don't think we can set an amount for the applicant to donate to us.
I think that's a problem.
Yeah.
Um, so. I, you know, again, I keep turning to the draft zoning and it's, it hasn't passed yet, but the draft zoning says that that contribution can be for public benefits. And to me, the B wall to long Otis is a public benefit. I don't see much in the way of public benefits from a, a twenty-eight by thirty freezer. I see that as a, a benefit to the owner. Um, I, you know, again, I'm not sure I care that they got the variance, I care about what the zoning says.
But the variance, the variance changes, it varies the zoning. So the, the zoning that they're operating under right now is what the variance says.
And they were correct in getting the variance, I mean, in the sense they would've had to do that.
So then- Let's, let's- So then, my feeling is, another condition of the zoning is a solar array of the draft zone. They could get enough points by a solar-
We can't implement a draft zoning bylaw.
Okay. Okay, then, so what, what is your proposal, just take a voluntary?
I think we take, I think we take whatever donation they're willing to give, but as a board, we have to decide, does that go to open space or some sidewalk fund and, or whatever it may be?
Yeah, I agree with John. I think, um, unfortunately, we're in a situation where we can agree to a voluntary contribution, but that we cannot make it a requirement nor can we rely on any other zoning than what's the zoning in place. And they appropriately went to the zone, went to the Z B A to get a variance, which they needed to do and then have come back to us in order to amend the site plan.
So can I ask then, when somebody goes for a variance on a, something like this, do we get noticed? Do we get a chance to make comment?
Um, not typically, the board wouldn't get that, um, opportunity, but I can certainly, moving forward, forward the applications to the board.
Okay.
I think that is a problem sometimes, is that there are decisions made by the Z B A that we as a planning board know nothing about. And so I think there probably needs to be better coordination between the matters that are coming before the zoning board and the planning board so that we are aware of those things that are coming before the zoning board. I think this probably is true also with conservation and other things. I mean, I think that these are the kinds of decisions that we need to be aware of when we're making our own decisions. So I do feel that we need more coordination between the information which they're getting and getting to our board. Because we're gonna run across situations like this.
I can just say from my experience on zoning review committee, um, it's, you know, Jenny, myself and a member of the zoning, zoning board. To give out a variance, they don't, they really prefer not to do that, they don't wanna have to do that. So for them to do that, it must've been pretty important and they must've felt like it was the right thing, so.
But I wish we as a board had had noticed of the fact that this particular thing was coming before them so that if we wanted to raise any questions or add any information as to our feeling as a planning board, um, I think that it's appropriate for the planning board in a situation like this to have been notified and to have been able to make comments if we wish on this particular variance, is all I'm saying.
Yeah.
So I'll just comment, um, on where the contribution goes towards. I, I just want to let the board know that we are short funding for the Oda Street corridor project and that section of the B wall. Um, so I would recommend that if a contribution, if the board decides a contribution is what they're deciding on, that it go towards that project.
I'm okay with the donation going towards that.
I'm also. So this would mean that, um, number four, which is the one we're really discussing, um, would, I think, slightly need, probably could be just a couple of sentences.
I mean, you could, you could keep with my recommendation, I, I don't see any issue with the wording of the condition four. I think it's really just the amount that the board needs to decide on.
Well, the other thing is you could just say, um, the third si- the third line, through a voluntary contribution, period.
I, yeah, I mean, I, so, in the, in other decisions the board has made, we haven't, um, stated voluntary and I don't think it's unusual for a planning board to ask for, um, financial contributions towards projects, especially when they have a direct benefit to it. Um, I do know what the applicant is saying, um, in regards to the, a board being allowed to do something like this, but there have been plenty of decisions where this has been done and where you can show a direct benefit to the project. I, I, in my opinion, it's appropriate.
Okay.
In, in what dollar amount?
So we, could we keep the language the same and just insert the, the dollar amount? What you're saying?
I, I think so, yes.
So my concern with that is the way that it's written, it says, the owner applicant shall assist the town. So that's basically forcing it. And if it's a voluntary contribution, that's gonna have two different competing meanings in the same sentence. And if we do shall and take out the voluntary, if they appeal it and say, well, they can't force us to pay this, is that going to render that condition null and void?
Yes.
Well, which, where the question wasn't addressed to you, so Jenny.
Are you asking if they could appeal the decision?
I'm saying if we, if we put in, if we keep number four generally as is for the first sentence and say, the owner applicant shall assist the town in implementation of the B wa- multi-use trail, blah, 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 which shall run blah, 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 through a financial contribution, that's forced, that's requiring a contribution.
Yes, that is requiring a contribution. If you made it a condition though, for a voluntary-
But you can't do a shall and a voluntary, you can't force a voluntary contribution.
You can't make a voluntary, yeah, right, yeah.
Right.
Exactly, so the question is how, yeah, I mean, voluntary and shall don't work together.
But I think- So the board has done this in the past with many decisions, including Amazon and including many, many other, um, decisions where you're asking for a financial contribution, um, usually because of a waiver or something else, like a direct public benefit, um, to the project.
All, all I'm saying is, I think we need to, if we're gonna do that, I think we need to take the shall off and do may.
Right.
It's just, it's a, it's a-
That's if you're asking for the, the voluntary contribution and that's totally up to the board. All I'm saying is that-
I, I have a question though. Is there a difference between the fact that this is a modification to a special permit?
It's not a special permit.
I'm sorry, site plan.
Site plan. Well, it's a big, that's a big difference in the discussion.
Right, but this is, there's plenty of site plans where we've asked for financial contributions. So I'm just asking, because, can I finish my que- can I finish?
Hold on.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I'm asking her a question.
Mark, could you ask your question and then you can answer it?
So. So because we didn't ask for a financial contribution in the original site plan, this is a modification now, right? Do we still have the authority to require a financial contribution?
No.
I'm not asking you, I'm asking Jenny.
You're, let me just clarify the question. You're asking if the planning board has the authority to ask for a financial contribution to a site plan review?
In a modification, in a modification to a site-
In a modification, in my opinion, yes.
So, it, I think my biggest problem with this is with Z B A and not with the applicant. So I, I feel like we need to move past it and I'm willing to make it a voluntary contribution.
Wait a minute.
Um, I, I, you know, I, as far as the amount goes, I'm not sure how, what twenty-five hundred dollars is really gonna do to help the town build this sidewalk.
Thirty thousand, thirty thousand, the project doesn't happen and there's no parking. I won't do it.
I won't do it. I'll keep the status quo.
Okay, so thirty thousand doesn't work, but twenty-five hundred is kind of the opposite spectrum. Is there someplace, I'm, I'm not getting combat, I'm just, is there someplace in the middle that would be acceptable?
So let me just say that when I went through this process a year and a half ago, we offered to build a sidewalk at my own cost across the front of the space. That was turned down because they wanted a ten-foot sidewalk instead of a four-foot sidewalk. I was going to build a four-foot sidewalk across the whole front of the property. That was turned down. Then the town also reversed action and said, "We don't need that because we're going to have the B-Walt mine. Grant us an easement." I did that. I don't really understand how this discussion has anything to do with parking in the back of the property that no one is going to see. It's not a detriment to the neighborhood, it's not unsuitable in any way. It's my understanding that the Westboro bylaws regarding the planning board, that's where the focus should be, not whether or not I'm going to make a contribution to the town, which I'm happy to make a contribution voluntarily to the Open Space Fund, but I know it looks like it's raining money over there, but running a business is very, very difficult.
That's not, that's not, I don't think that's what we're thinking. I don't think we're minimizing what you're doing. What I'm trying to figure out is if there was a require, and this was my line of questioning before, if there was a requirement in the site plans, and I'm using my own personal knowledge of where I work, that there is a requirement for in-site plan standards, you have to build sidewalks across the frontage. So I was wondering if there is that same requirement here, and if there was that requirement, then it does apply. But we found out there's not.
Correct.
And so now we're trying to figure out the balancing act of you are asking for something that is not technically allowed, right? Because you had to get a variance, so it's not allowed by zoning, but you got that permission. Now you're changing something on your site plan. So we're trying to do a balancing act of what the impact of losing that open space is to, hold on, don't shake your head, what losing that open space is to the benefit of the town. And I understand open space in some regards is grass and trees and plants and stuff like that, but it's also walking paths and sidewalks. And so that's the connection we're trying to make of, can we have any kind of public benefit in terms of open space through a sidewalk? And I'm not saying you have to pay for it. I understand you got, you know, torn five different directions by probably five different departments in town, and that's not fair either. I'm just trying to figure out where we stand right now and what, what we think is a fair agreement to allow you to get the parking, which you need and which we want you to have, and what the town can have from losing that open space. Because it does have some public benefit to it.
How does losing eight thousand square feet on the back of a property you can't see be a detriment to the town in any way when all the properties east of me and north of me have a hundred percent impervious?
I'm not saying they're right. I'm not saying they're right.
Right, I, I think, and I, I didn't, where I was shaking my head was, the zoning board made the decision, whether some members of the board like it or not, they made the decision. So now that is the zoning. So we're essentially back to a by right site plan approval project, which is why I'm saying it's difficult with all this other stuff going around in the periphery, the new amendments, the other zoning, the, you know, the bonus points. But really, the zoning board made their decision, we have our variance. So now it's back to straight site plan approval, which in, in my professional opinion, twenty-four years of being a professional engineer, I don't feel you have the right, on a site plan approval by right project, to strictly require, and Jenny disagrees with me on this point. My opinion, legal opinion, that I've had the conversation to make sure I'm not full of baloney, is with me on this. So that's why we're saying a voluntary donation to open space was our thought, because the variance did grant a reduction in open space. If it has to be to the B-Walt trail, if that's better because it's along our frontage, that's okay. But I think the dollar amount that Will's proposing at twenty-five hundred is kind of where he's at with that.
So can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So forgetting the history, right? If you were just in here for a by right site plan approval and the board required sidewalks?
Yep. I could appeal that.
You could appeal that?
Yep.
I mean, I think my, yeah, I think my basic concern is the fact, and what we're, I think, in going back to what I said earlier, is that if we, as a board, had been aware of what was going on at the ZBA, that would've been the time to raise the questions that we have. I mean, it's, when we decrease the amount of open space from a, what is required to a smaller number, then we generally look at some sort of a condition for that. In this situation, we were kind, we're kind of forestalled because the ZBA went ahead and said, "Okay, you can have that variance." And the ZBA can't put a condition on, I mean, they couldn't then say, "Well, you know, we'll give you the ZBA variance and you'll have to contribute or pay or whatever." I mean, it's showing what you don't get out of the zoning board appeals because they're looking at different conditions. And so that I think we're in a situation at this point where I think that a voluntary contribution is the way that we may have to go, that we may have to maybe try to clean up our procedures and work. I've never seen a situation like this before. I think it's an unusual situation. And I, Jenny, do you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I, I had to look back because I, I didn't remember. I did provide comments to the ZBA application and I did copy the planning board on it. And it was essentially the same thing, asking if, through the variance there, giving the variance, I recommended that they either transfer a portion of undeveloped land to the town, similar to what we do with the Transorient Village, implementation of the sustainable design elements to help offset that loss of open space to the town. Contribution of fee in lieu of the improvements was the third one. So that, that was done.
But they never, there was no answer from them essentially in their decision?
No.
I mean, the decision had no answer in that particular application?
But, you know, it's also our responsibility as residents to keep abreast of those, those meetings and those hearings. So, you know, it's, it falls on our shoulders as well.
I agree on that. So if we needed to change the language on paragraph four, which is, I think, what we're looking at at this particular time.
And I will just add one more thing, that in regards to the legality of a financial contribution, I did talk to our town council as well, and they agreed that it is appropriate for the planning board to ask for a contribution, as they have in the past. So they think it's generally...
I'm not worried about it because, as you know, if there's any appeal, they'll spend more money on attorneys than they would on whatever this donation is, so.
Yeah, no one has any intention.
Yeah, so I, I, I think whatever Jenny and the board is comfortable with, on what the language should be, fine, it goes to the B-Walt and, you know, thank you for the twenty-five hundred dollar donation, so.
Peter, do you have any comments? You made your comments, Mark, do you have anything further?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we get put in a hard, you know, between a rock and a hard place. And to be honest with you, at some point, common sense kind of needs to prevail. And common sense tells me they need the parking, it'll be a better project with more parking. You know, I, I would like to, I would have liked the opportunity to require a contribution towards the B-Walt in front, but I don't think this is the time or the place to do that. So I'm, I'm willing to move this forward with a voluntary contribution. And note my disappointment.
I'm just curious, how did you come up with the twenty-five hundred as a number? Is there like a formula that you use? They said, you know, this many parking spaces, this many hundreds of dollars, like, I'm just curious?
No.
Yeah, I will say, I did talk to the town assessor and he felt that the value of the property was going to be substantially increased by, by this, by these additional...
Which would be more taxes even to the town, so, you know, we're picking it that way. John, does any?
You know, as long as this goes to wherever we agree to, then let's just wrap this up.
You're right.
And so do we need to rewrite condition four?
I think just the first sentence.
So do we must say, "The owner applicant has expressed an interest in assisting the town in the implementation of the B-Walt multi-use trail and the Otis Street corridor project, which shall run directly along the frontage of sixty-six Otis Street, through a voluntary financial contribution in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars, and then strike the remaining sentences of that paragraph?"
Yeah, I would, I would also leave out the rest of it. That sounds fine. Kristen, did you get that?
Fred?
Yeah. Are there any comments from the general public on this matter?
Fred, you're not general public.
Well, or town.
I was waiting a minute.
Or town, right.
Doug, I am happy that they're, from the narrow community, the director, my apologies. I am happy that the business is successful. I want to clarify a couple of things. Mr. Leonardo has been consistent on the request to either build the sidewalk or do something in lieu of that. It did come up in the zoning board meeting. Prior to the meeting and during the meeting, again, community development director had asked about a contribution to offset the, the loss of open space. The board felt, my understanding is that there was no voluntary contribution or any offset to solar, EV charging, any of those issues. That was volunteered optionally through the applicant. And the board felt that if they required as part of the variance, it would be a quid pro quo. So they were reluctant to put that requirement in their condition. It did come up, though, so it's not like it was forward to the committee. They just felt that if they required either a financial contribution or the applicant to do something to offset, that it would be seen as not appropriate for that board.
I, that's, that was my feeling, I mean, that's...
That was exactly correct.
Yeah, that's interesting because they've made other rulings where they have required a financial contribution for a variance. Pulte?
Very unusual.
Pulte Holmes?
Yeah, Pulte, so...
The Highlands?
In that particular case, and again, I was, I happened to be here for that, there was recommendations from other boards for the offset.
Yeah, but they didn't ask us for anything.
True, that is true.
Okay, well, again, I appreciate that you tried.
Sure.
Fred?
Thank you.
Did ZBA have any expectation of us getting any contribution? Is that, like, did they talk about that and say, "Oh, planning board will take care of it"?
Yeah, I, well, I don't, I, I don't know if that was officially stated, but I think there was, there was some thought that that would happen as part of the site plan review. Again, the, and I apologize, it probably wasn't a coordination on that regard, but the subject did come up. It wasn't like this was forward to, to either board. And in fact, the voluntary contribution has come up multiple times. And, and truth be told, yes, they're not Amazon, we get that. But it's a proportional contribution is kind of the, the thought. You know, but, you know, all due respect, this board has required sidewalks in multiple places for site plan because it's a betterment to that property. We're not asking for anything that's not a betterment to Mr. Oliver. It's a direct betterment to his business, that people can walk in front of his establishment, regardless of the parking. I mean, the parking was an issue that was brought up before we applied. That's not a new conversation. If you go back to my comments from the original application, I warned him that he would not have sufficient parking, regardless of what our zoning said. You know, so, again, I get frustrated that the town, yes, we want his business in town, absolutely. We're very supportive of our business, especially this one, it's a good draw. But the, the multimodal or the sidewalk is a direct relationship to his business. All the businesses downstairs, as they, on that Otis Street, as they establish themselves, are going to walk to his establishment. Be crazy not to, whatever you got.
Thank you, Fred. All right, if there are no other comments from the board?
I just have one more comment. The date of the site plan is August first. Did we get a copy of, did you send that over to me? I couldn't find it in my email and I don't see it on the permit pro.
No, I think the most recent one is...
I have revised August fourth, I thought was, or at least, at least, and somebody said August fourth.
I have July twenty-fifth, so I guess my question is how, what is different for this site plan?
Mark, I thought you said August fourth?
This was, I think, I believe in response to Mr. Leonardo's letter. Oh, just added the book and, so on sheet one, we added the book and page number. Why is this thing's not agreeing with me today? Can I try and zoom? So right down here, see, we had the book and page reference for the variance decision. We added dimensional setbacks on the cooler building. That's it. Those are the only two changes. Yeah, no change on the second, no change on the third. So it was just adding the book and page reference and the dimensions to the cooler.
Yeah, Kristen distributed that to us today.
So what was the date of that?
August first, response.
August first, yeah, okay.
It came with the response to the public comments and the...
Okay.
All right, so so far, I see condition number two, instead of special permit decision, it would say site plan approval. Paragraph three, at the end of the paragraph, and revised August first.
So with that condition, with that condition, I would like to amend it to have them provide a revised plan showing the relocation of the bike corral. Because if this is going to have them build to the plans, then that's, that's how it's going to be built.
So add a sentence that the applicant shall provide a revised plan showing the relocation of a bike corral prior to the building permit application?
Or consistent with the discussion of the...
And you could add that to paragraph five, I think, to condition number five. If you just add a sentence on condition number five.
I think it, it would go on two, because that's talking about the...
Are you on the two?
Yeah, or sorry, three, because that's, that's talking about the plan itself.
Okay, either way, you could do it.
So it's just basically saying, submit a revised plan showing changes.
And then Kristen, you have the change for paragraph number four.
You said you were taking a shall.
Uh, yeah, so it would read, and it might be different this time, because I didn't write it down. The owner applicant, what did I say?
Has expressed an interest.
Has expressed an interest in assisting the town in the implementation of the B-Walt, blah, blah, blah. So it's basically just the, the owner applicant has expressed an interest in assisting, and then the rest should be the same. Through a financial, voluntary financial contribution in the amount of...
In the amount of?
In the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars, period. And then the town shall utilize all of that, and everything else after that is struck.
If I may, for clarification, on the bike rack location. So all along the front of the building is landscaped. And then you have some landscaping here in front of the board and batten pergola fence. So really, the location would just simply slide almost even with the end of the sidewalk.
That's fine.
That's good, yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
So six, the last one here, I'm sorry, I may have lost a page myself.
Six is the last condition.
Six was the last, okay. I assume we'll be back when we do everything?
Oh, yeah, it is a restroom, but I don't think he can, was he involved? Yeah, he was on the board.
He was, yeah, okay. All right, well, one of...
If you could just give us a minute, Perchuk, I'm just waiting for Peter to get back.
Right.
And then I just wanted to remind the board to close the hearing before you vote.
Okay. All right, could I have a motion to close the hearing? It's better.
Second.
Any more questions, all in favor? Are we ready to vote on the motion?
It's your last one, man.
Go for it.
No, it's your last one, you gotta do it.
Please, John.
No, I can't.
Please, John.
No, I'm not going to do it.
All right. Peter? Give us the last motion.
In accordance with section three, one, three dot one of Westboro zoning by law, I move that the planning board approved the moni- modification to site plan review for sixty-six Otis Street, Cold Harbor Rowing, excepting to the following conditions.
That's previously written.
As previously written out loud.
That's fine.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Jenny, do you have any updates for us?
I do. Let me just pull up my notes. Um, so the first thing I'll share is that, uh, the WR TA, so the Worcester Regional Transit Authority, will be doing a transit service analysis, uh, over the next few months. And so that will be not just for Westboro, but also with Shrewsbury and Northboro also. They will be doing stakeholder engagement meetings, um, talking to different boards and committees. Essentially, what they will be looking at is our current transit service, which is through VIA, and, um, essentially looking at our needs. So do we need a fixed transit route? Do we need to have a better, uh, micro transit system, things like that? So more information will be put on the website about that, um, as I get information about when those meetings will be held. So I think it's really exciting. It hasn't been done before.
It's very exciting. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank heavens.
Yeah. The second thing that I'll mention is that the, uh, the sewer, uh, report, the CWMP, has, uh, been completed. The DPW director did give a presentation at the last select board, I think it was the last select board meeting, um, a few weeks ago. So I would encourage the board to watch it if you didn't see it live. I don't have the report to distribute just yet, but I believe they will be making it available soon, um, in addition to the presentation that was made at the select board meeting.
Yeah, I didn't know if we wanted to have, or, I'm sorry.
We talked about having our own.
Yeah, because I, I was at that presentation, but I didn't get a chance, I mean, it wasn't a public hearing, it was a presentation. So I didn't get a chance to ask questions and, um, I did have some questions on it and I talked to the DPW director and he said I, I could reach out to him, but that's just one person, so I didn't know if the board would feel.
Actually, we did discuss at the last meeting having him come and essentially give a small presentation to us so that we could ask him questions. So I think that probably would be a good idea at this particular time, mainly because we, as a planning board, I certainly as a planning board member, am getting a lot of questions from people about the sewer and what the town's gonna do in relation to the moratorium. So I think having him come and give us a short presentation is a very good idea. And Mark, you are gone this meeting, I think, I, it looks like it can't be till October because if you're away
Wow.
the seventeenth, and then we have a joint meeting on the first.
Yeah, I'm gonna miss the next two.
Right, and then September, so I would say.
It's not gonna do it at the joint meeting, so.
Yeah, the beginning.
Why can't we do it on the third?
Because we have that joint.
Because he's already presented to the select board too.
Right, but I thought we were talking about the third being a joint meeting. I thought the select board was gonna come to our meeting to appoint the new member, and then we were gonna hold our regular meeting.
Yes, you will have your regular meeting also.
Why don't we do it on the third then? That'd be great. Let's see if we can have him come.
Yeah.
Okay, I will. Yep, I'll ask.
Because I have a lot of questions about the moratorium and, and how that actually is gonna work and, you know, what the outcome is gonna be. And, uh, the questions that people ask me is, is after this report comes out, is there a possibility that the moratorium could perhaps be shortened, um, now that they have information on this and how the town might be able to handle that? Because I think it obviously is very discouraging to anybody who's looking to develop, doing any development in the town at the moment with the sewer moratorium. So, that's kind of my feeling about it. So yes, let's have him come on the third, that'd be great.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask, um, Chris Payant if he would come and give a presentation.
Good.
Um, the next thing is that we have two zoning bylaw, uh, proposed articles for town meeting in October. Uh, one is the one that was, uh, briefly touched on today, uh, for the highway business zoning. Um, so.
Surprise.
It's, it's, I think it's a really exciting, uh, zoning article. It's a different concept, um, so I look forward to hearing your thoughts. But for timing wise, um, we're going, I am going to be presenting to the select board at our September third meeting, so essentially to both of you with just the concept, not the official public hearing, um, that will be later on, and I had proposed September seventeenth for that, um, initial presentation on it. I don't expect it to be done in one meeting. Um, the other zoning article that we have is for the inclusionary zoning, which essentially isn't really changing a lot, but it's clarifying a lot in the zoning bylaw and grouping it into just one bylaw. Right now, there's just many different places in the bylaw that talk about what percentage of affordable housing needs to be included, and then there's no minimum unit, so, it's caused a lot of issues over the past couple of years, and I think it's time to get that clarified. So that's the second one. Um, so I just wanted to ask for comments on that timing, for having it, the public hearing on September seventeenth.
For both of them?
For both of them.
We're gonna keep it open till, are you planning on closing the public hearing on the seventeenth as well?
I would not think so.
Okay, but, I mean, I won't, I, I find it unlikely that I'll be here on the seventeenth. I will try to make it though if, if at all physically possible.
Well, it's gonna still be open, yeah, if it's still open on the, the next, what is it, October?
Yeah, town meeting is October twenty-first, so you still have October first and October fifteenth prior.
I would feel better if it was left open so I had a chance to ask questions, but again, I'm just one member, so. If you guys decide to close it, I'll yell at you afterwards.
I will not recommend closing it at that date.
I would think that would be fine.
Um, okay. And then the last, uh, well, actually, two more things. So the downtown plan, just an update. I do have the draft of the downtown plan, the final draft, so we're reviewing it internally, um, and then we can distribute it for further comments. Would the board like a chance to comment on the draft prior to, um, it being finalized?
You're asking us?
I am asking you, yes. If you would like the opportunity, it's a long document.
Yeah, what is your timing at this point on that?
Oh, we have another year technically, but with the contract with the, that's with the grant, with the contract with the consultant, um, we, our, our deadline is around fall. So we're already past the time that we initially said we would be done, which was June. So now it's, we're really just playing it by ear. So I think there's time, but I just want to tell you that it is a long document. Um, but if you would like the opportunity to comment, I would distribute it to the board and then you can get back to me within a reasonable time period. I would say a couple of weeks.
I think that's fair.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, is there any movement on looking towards further funding on this? If, you said you had, have you done a grant on it or going to do a grant?
Yes, I did, uh, submit a grant application through EO HLC, and those will be announced in the fall.
Fall, anywhere between September and December, is that?
I've, uh, for those grants, I've received notice typically in the end of Sep- end of September and then at the latest, um, early November. So it's really, there's no deadline. It's just fall.
Stuff that says fall.
Yeah, I wish there was.
Okay.
So we'll, we're waiting to hear on that. Um, and then the housing production plan, um, that is current, the final draft is being reviewed by the Affordable Housing Trust, and so we should have that done, uh, within the next week or so.
All right. Now, we need.
Mark had a question, so.
Yeah.
We've posted for the assistant town planner?
Yep.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and, um, how is that process going? Are you doing all the interviews? Is somebody, is Hazel doing them with you, or?
Um, so for the initial interviews.
I'm not saying that's necessary, I'm just curious to know the timing more than anything, like.
Yeah, and I guess that can be a question if the board would like to be involved. Um, the person will be directly supervised by me. The initial interviews, in talking with HR, we thought would be best to have me and the HR, um, person involved. And then the second interviews, a member of the Affordable Housing Trust did ask me, um, recently if they could be involved in the second interview. So if a member of the planning board would like to be involved in the second interview, I think that's fine.
I certainly think that'd be appropriate.
Okay.
And I just saw the ad for the first time yesterday or today, it just came out. Or I saw, I got it on my computer the first time I saw it, um, because it also was the first time I saw the ad for the planning board position. And I didn't know whether that was the first time the assistant town planner position had been advertised or whether it had been advertised prior to that time.
No, it was recently advertised, I believe, I want to say the beginning of last week. I've taken some vacation time, so I honestly have not been on, on top of it. Um, and I will also mention that we do have the open position of economic development coordinator, um, Mark Zep is no longer with the town.
Oh, really? Um, can I just ask a que- a question quickly about, um, planning board, um, I, I'm concerned how this information, I'd like to see the information on the opening for the planning board out in the community and getting this thing on my computer, which is the only time I've seen it, is how do we get this information out so that people?
Well, I think we should make a big announcement here, but I agree, maybe we could get on O one fi- uh, you know, the, the commu- uh, Westboro TV or Community Advocate or something and, and try and publicize this, or.
Yeah, it was, um, I, I believe that, um, it was put out on social media through our social media channels, um, posted.
Yeah, but see, a lot of people don't see those things, and I just, as I said, um, I really would like to see the information get out to the wider public.
So what, what would be the vehicle to get that out?
The community advocate, I think, probably as much as anything else.
Or even if, even if we asked Shelby to make an announcement on her show, I think a lot of people watch that.
I can, I can ask.
But I think the advocate would be a good choice too, if.
I can have, um, my wife post on some of the Facebook groups.
That would be great.
Yeah, I'm not on the Facebook groups, but.
No, I think that would be great.
Nor do you want to be.
No, let's just get, let's get the advertisement, let's get the information out.
So to answer your question before, the, um, assistant town planner position was posted on Mass Planners by our very own Janice Gris on July nineteenth.
Okay.
There you go. Thank you.
Has there been any interest for the planning board position?
Uh, yeah, I know somebody who's interested.
And I also know somebody, but I, I think it's important that we get it out.
And do we have to have a decision September third?
Uh, I think it would be beneficial because, um, we've got those zoning articles on the seventeen.
But we're also having a joint hearing with the select board, we would have to schedule another joint hearing.
It's gonna be the same process as when you came through, or? And do you have to choose someone then?
No, I think it could wait, I mean, yeah, I think, yeah. I, my concern is that.
Well, not, not everyone has your expertise, so, I just, I just, I just, I'm just thinking like, I don't know who's, I don't know, I'm just curious, since hypothetical, like, the applicants come up and.
But like, who would be?
No, I, no, but John, I think it could be something we might want to continue because it's the day after Labor Day. And if some, if there's a, a good candidate who just can't be there, I don't think that's necessarily fair to them.
Yeah, but I think that's something that happens if that's the situation, but I feel like it's unfair to the candidates who do apply and do make their interest known to then continue because we're waiting on somebody else.
Yeah, I, I think my concern is that the time limit to make the application, I feel, is very short. And that, and also it's August. So, uh, there, you know, as I said, I looked at the ad and it's what, thirty days, I think, that they have, or it's less than thirty days that they have to, to show interest. I mean, it's just a very short period of time, and that's.
Yeah, could I ask, could we make that a hybrid meeting so that if somebody is away that week, um, and they wanted, really wanted to serve, that they would at least have an opportunity to participate in the meeting?
Do we wanna do that ahead of time, or do we wanna wait until that's actually a situation that we have to address? Because we could set it up as a hybrid meeting and nobody actually want to be remote, and then they've gotta deal with a hybrid meeting.
No, I, I agree. We don't have to decide until it's posted, which is forty-eight hours before the third, so.
Yeah, I, I don't think we want to do a hybrid meeting for, quite frankly, for interviewing someone for the planning board. I mean, I, I think.
No, but I think to Mark's point, if there is somebody interested and they're on vacation, that makes sense, but I don't want to do that preemptively in case that doesn't pan out.
I don't want somebody to have to, you know, completely rearrange their vacation plans because, you know, I mean, the, I don't think that's really fair to people.
I, I, I also am pretty strongly against continuing that because I just feel like there's gonna be, there's gonna be applicants, and if there's, even if there's not applicants, you know, thirty days is enough time to write a letter and send it in and say you're interested. I don't, I don't know what.
I'm not saying continue, I'm saying if, if we don't think there's a suitable fit, do we have to choose someone?
Oh, no.
That's what I was asking.
But I guess my question is, at that point, who would we be waiting for?
No, just wait to the election cycle, and someone can run.
And the other option is to re-advertise one. I mean, if there aren't enough, put the ad out again, I mean, put the information out again, but I mean, obviously, we're not required to, to choose someone just to have a body.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I wanted.
Yeah.
I don't, I didn't know that.
Pete, you sure we can't just change your mind?
I think that's some, that's a bridge we cross.
All right, well, let's leave that at the moment, all right. Um, we need to appoint board members to capital expenditure, open space and land prioritization. I thought we'd done that, but what, we need to vote on them at this point? Oh, we did vote on them.
Well, I was capital expenditures and.
Right, and.
Well, we talked about this at the June fourth meeting. I actually went back to look and see if we voted. I had, you know, it wasn't in the minutes, it wasn't on the video.
Those in particular committees, well, not necessarily, but you definitely, you see what I'm saying, we actually have to do.
Okay, so that was the problem. Because we did look at the town appointments at that meeting and did not do anything with those that we'd gotten the list saying that those were forever appointments essentially.
Right, well, so, so I would volunteer for the open space committee. I'm, uh, trying to convene a meeting of that group.
Nominate Mark for open space.
All right, could, yeah, is there?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, we're excited, open space. Capital expenditure, John, were you interested in?
Yeah, I actually didn't look into the meeting schedule. Do we know what their meeting schedule is?
So it's usually at the end of the year, um, you're pretty much.
Fiscal year or calendar year?
Calendar year. You're pretty much going over what to budget for the following year. Um, you'll have four or five mi- meetings around a little before Thanksgiving, and then you'll probably meet one or two times around, uh, after, you know.
Before springtime meeting.
Before springtime.
Before springtime.
Meeting, and that's what it is.
Okay, all right.
It's very interesting.
All right, would someone like to nominate John for the?
I nominate John Galsich for the, uh, capital expenditure committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Do we vote on mine?
Yes. We did, we did. Um, well, we've got that on there. I'm just, I, um, have put my reservation from the, uh, Community Preservation Act Committee. I just cannot handle that because I've been trying to run that plus I'm a planning board and it. So anyway, I have resigned as of, at my last meeting last night, so I resigned as of today. So for our next meeting, we need to think about appointing someone from the planning board to the Community Preservation Committee. So I'm just.
When is their next meeting?
Uh, September. Not till the first of September. Anyway, think about it, because. Anyway, think about it, because we could appoint someone.
And what about the land prioritization committee?
That is just sitting there, nothing's happening.
Well, we should appoint somebody.
I've been on it.
Okay, so I nominate Hazel to continue as a representative on the land prioritization committee.
Which is lying dead in the water, yeah.
Okay.
I don't mind.
All is in favor.
And I just wanted to mention a sustainable Westboro also, that we had talked about.
I was sustain...
That one we nominated, too.
Well, so I am technically the alternate until you find another member. So, I just wanted to remind the board that I'm a temporary fill-in for that. However, I think the discussion was, is there a benefit to having a planning board member on that committee when we have a staff member now?
Could we maybe rehash this discussion when we have a full board, and may, maybe we could rearrange some of it?
That's the whole thing, because we may want to rearrange.
Can you do it another couple of months?
We're leaving some committees for...
I'm not saying that we, that the new person, whoever it may be, has to be the sustainable Westboro, but...
You guys made me.
Well, the other question is...
You told me I had to be.
Well, we, we could, we could, if they have a greater interest in capital expend- I mean, I don't...
Now, you're forcing me out of that one.
Oh, you're, sorry.
Well, the other thing is...
I'm not forcing you out, if they want to do open space, I would consider...
The other thing we...
No, so I probably wouldn't consider giving up open space.
We may, yeah, we may want to consider as to whether we need planning board members on all the things that we have planning board members on.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to point out, is that you should consider that, with a lot of new positions in place.
Maybe we should look at this. Yes, look at the board members and what they're doing, and seeing whether maybe we can work just through staff on some of those and get our information out of it.
Well, we would have to make a request to the select board to revise the makeup of the committee.
Depending on which, yeah.
Well, of all of those committees.
Right.
Except for the master plan implementation.
I don't think there's anything specific that, you know, I don't know, why we need to look kind of at...
I think all of those committees is...
Which ones we are required and which ones are voluntary to be on.
Oh, I think they're all required that this planning board has a representative.
So, I think the master plan committee, the sustainable Westboro...
Well, the master plan committee, we would revise the makeup, but I don't think we're gonna revise the makeup to not have a planning board representative on the master plan committee.
Right, I'm, yeah, I'm just trying to remember those ones.
But all the other ones, the sustainable Westboro, the community preservation, all those other committees, capital expenditure, you name it, they're all subcommittees of the select board. And I would, again, I, I don't want to guarantee, but I'm pretty sure that when the select board made those committees, they said representative of the planning board, and, and it's...
Jenny, do you want to just take, get a list for us? Which I think could be handy, to have a list of all the committees on which planning board members are expected to have representatives.
Yeah, it would also be nice if they would, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It would also be nice if they would, instead of saying it has to be a planning board member, it could be a planning board member or designee, and then we could designate you or the new assistant town planner to represent us. But most of those committees, I think, are worded that it has to be a planning board member. I could be wrong.
Or maybe there's something, or it could be a staff member, someone we possibly be able to use that as a...
Well, that's what I meant by designee.
Yeah, well, designee, you'd have to designate, you have to have a particular title for designation of it. You can't just say designee.
Well, why could, if it's a designee, we could appoint...
Oh, you're a staff...
Anybody we feel appropriately represents our interests.
No, we can't appoint somebody outside of, I don't think, a staff member or a member of the board. I mean, in other words, I think the, the inclu- behind this was the information that it had to be someone of that type. Really, you couldn't just pick somebody out of the community.
I would argue that, you know, it would be more beneficial if we could represent, pick somebody to represent the planning board like a former member to represent us, or, you know...
Well, okay, then, then we can lo- leave that suggestion. But anyway, if you could just make the list, and so we know what we're talking about as far as the committee.
Yes.
Reports of board members on town committees, CMRPC, Peter?
That's me, but I haven't, I haven't attended.
That was you? Okay, no meeting.
They had one meeting that I didn't attend, and I haven't had a real sense.
Open space, anything on there at the moment?
We can't convene, it's, we could, because we haven't had a quorum, so...
A quorum, okay.
So, that we solved tonight. I did have a master plan implementation committee where the general topic for discussion was the downtown plan. We got a little sidetracked on specifics, which, but generally, the consensus was that the process that we're following with the downtown study and what Jenny's doing with the grant applications is consistent with the intent of the master plan.
All right. Community preservation, we're in the process of completing the plan. Hopefully, it will be ready by early September. It will then be sent out to boards and commissions for review, take a look at it. And then when it comes back, the plan is to go, to have a presentation at the October meeting, town meeting, just to bring people up to date as what's being done and the project to move forward, and then hold the pub- there's a requirement to hold a public meeting, and that would be in early November. That's where I'm at. Okay. Meeting minutes, I don't think we have any, is that correct, Kristen? John?
I didn't see any.
What?
There's none listed, do we have any?
Oh, well, I didn't have the time, I can't remember if I sent these to you or not.
I don't remember sending them.
No.
Okay, we'll wait till the next meeting, then on that.
What was the date?
July seventeenth.
Yeah, we didn't get that, so...
All right, we'll review minutes the next meeting. Upcoming meeting dates, August twentieth, September three, which is the joint meeting with the Board of Selectment, and September seventeen so far. Any changes on that? Okay.
So, I won't be here the twentieth?
Right, or the seventeenth.
Maybe the seventeenth, but probably, probably not.
Okay.
Sorry.
I would expect no.
Right. And before we adjourn tonight, I think there's nothing else on our agenda. I'd like to announce that this is Peter Bouchard's last meeting, and that we thank him so much for his service, and we're going to miss him. And we just had a small gift that we would like to thank him.
Thank you all, it's been a pleasure, I've learned a lot, and I'm sure it's some when I get a little older and my kids are out of the house, I can try to help out more with the town in this avenue, so thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Really, in our best dear family.
Thank you.
Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Some...
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, Peter, you're now relieved.